It's 5:30, we're going to call the meeting to order. We have a quorum. He'll stand, trustee Linda Maxwell, ladies and the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Trustee Ferguson will lead us in our prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege to gather here tonight and serve our community. We thank you for the teachers of Independent School District of Gatesville. We thank you for the support staff. We thank you for the administrators. And most of all, Father, we thank you for the wonderful children to attend this school. We pray that you bless us with wisdom and fairness so that we may make decisions that honor you and serve our community. We ask that you keep us all safe, particularly employees of this school district. We ask these favors for blessing in Jesus' name. Amen.
It's time Dr. Pollard will spotlight. Well, we'll start with our student spotlight, and we've got the varsity volleyball team here tonight. And so before the fall season began, the girls probably don't know this, but we challenged all the coaches of all the team sports. You know, we've had a habit of making the playoffs in all of our team sports, but then getting beat the very first round. And so we challenged all the sports teams to win a game, win one playoff game. And our volleyball team was the first one to do it, and they won two. And almost won a third one. And they had a very exciting season of, at times, they would have ups and downs, and it was exciting to watch and stressful, but they did a great job. And I think the turnaround came at Selaydo. Selaydo was the top-ranked team, and we beat them. And then we played a tiebreaker game against Robinson, and that was a really exciting game, too. We beat them, and then we got in as the third seed and beat Buena Vista, no Georgetown Gateway in round one. And then in area, we beat Caldwell. And so we had a really exciting run. And the girls got lots of different awards. So let's see here. Members of the team include Vanya Martinez, Barrett Boyd, Laura Trejo, Ally Penrod, Rachel Garrett, Charlie Barron, Emma Pollard, Tamaa Miller, Kaylee Haywood, Lola Barron, and Chloe Matthews. And then Taylor Sanderson also came up for the playoffs. And we got a lot of honors and awards. Newcomer of the year was Emma Pollard. First team Lola Barron and Kaylee Haywood. Second team Charlie Barron, honorable mention Barrett Boyd, Chloe Matthews, and Tamaa Miller. And then the thing we're most proud of, the academic all district, they're doing good in their schoolwork, too. Lola Barron, Barrett Boyd, Rachel Garrett, Kaylee Haywood, Vanya Martinez, Chloe Matthews, and Emma Pollard. And just this past week, we also had the Super Syntex honorable mentions for Emma Pollard, Lola, and Kayla, Kaylee. And so we have a lot of awards, and it's hard to keep up with all of it. And so Coach Janie Weber, this was her fourth year, third year?
Third year.
Third year. And so she really did great. And so next year, we wanted to go all the way to state. No, Jane, poor Jane gets a real... Yeah, yeah. So you guys give these girls a hand. Y'all come up for a question. Some just got back from soccer, some from basketball. So they're all in different sports now, so.
Okay, thank you. Sure I've got everybody?
Can you see it? Let me scoot over.
All right. Should I give them a warning or just take? I'll just take a couple. And then on two, one, two, and one, two. Thank you.
So that was our student spotlight. And then our staff spotlight, Brittany Crosby is here. And we got tickled because we had a set of grandparents come to the central office and say, "We need to speak to you." And that always has this ominous type feeling. And so Brittany, really, the grandparents were here to really brag on her. They even had pictures of their grandson speaking in front of his class. And they said, "He's been in a shell his whole life and has been so nervous and kind of had some anxiety, very shy." And so they described Brittany as a miracle worker, amazing, awesome. They said, "We can't believe he's up here talking to the..." And he had a big smile on his face, talking to the other kids. They said, "It's a complete turnaround from his usual behavior." And they feel like that Ms. Crosby was totally responsible for getting him out of his shell. And they said that he's had a wonderful school year, and they couldn't have asked for a better teacher. And so they said, "We need to honor her in some small way." So here we are. So Brittany, we sure are proud of you. So come on up.
Okay, here we go. One, two, one, two. Thank you.
Boy, people get out of here in a hurry. And last but not least, we wanted to recognize some community members. So Black Acre Title, if you guys didn't know this, last year sponsored 15 kids. They bought shoes, coats, pants, shirts, and one toy or interest item. And this year Natasha emailed me and said, "Let's do 20." And so they just, out of the kindness and generosity of their heart, decided to sponsor 20 kids. It's quite a bit of money. Does that come out of the staff?
Both. The company sponsors some, and then all the people that work for us are with us also sponsoring.
Pitch in.
We started a couple of years ago doing it with the National Bank, the CPS kids, you know, like the foster kids. And then they just didn't have any more kids for us to sponsor. They got to where they had too many other volunteers for them. So we're like, "How else can we help kids?"
We're trying to find kids that might not get help.
Sure, exactly. Yeah, like, you know, not maybe parents that are still working, but just can't afford extra money to spend on kids, so.
Well, it's very generous, especially in this economy, to go from 15 to up into 20. And I know those kids are very appreciative. We've got the list going. I think we've just about got it finished, because I know these ladies enjoy shopping for them.
Well, maybe not us directly, but a bunch of the people in the office, there are a bunch of the other girls who love to shop, so.
And Black Acre Title, they're changing their name, but they like to still go by Black Acre because the local folks know Black Acre. And what's the new name going to be?
Capital Title of Texas.
Capital Title of Texas, okay. All right. The time being, we're using Black Acre still just for name recognition.
Yes, we're still, we're still working and functioning under, we're a DBA of Capital Titles, so.
Eventually, I'm sure they'll take that away from us, but for now, we're still able to use it.
Good, good. Well, we sure do appreciate you guys coming. We've got a certificate for you guys to take back to the office and let everyone know how appreciative we are. Thank you guys so much.
One, two, one, two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Next on our agenda is public comments. Do we have anyone here to speak to the board on any agenda item that's not on the board?
Yes, sir.
We have one, Laura Bates.
Okay, we have Laura Bates. The board encourages comments about the district from members of the public. Anyone who signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with the board procedures may do so. The board asks that each participant's comments pertain to district business and be no longer than five minutes. For any member of the public who is accompanied by a translator, your time will be doubled as required by law. Remember that the Board of Regents may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight. In addition, the board has adopted policies to provide prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns for employees, students, their parents, and the general public. Copies of our district policies and procedures on public comment and filing complaints are available at the Gatesville ISD Administration Office, 311 South Lover's Lane, Gatesville, Texas. So welcome, Laura, and we're glad to hear from you.
Well, my oldest great-granddaughter is in sixth grade, and about a month or six weeks ago, she told me, she started telling me about some problems in her school with furries. I didn't know what she was talking about. So I asked her about it, and she said, "These are kids that go up and down the hall barking, and some of them are biting other students." And I asked her what the school was doing about it, and she said she didn't know that they were doing anything about it. And so today, I took her in and I asked her about it, and she said that they're still doing it. So my question is, what's going to be done about this?
Laura, I know the board can't speak or act or anything, but we'll just talk in generalities. There's a lot of concern across a lot of communities about furries. You hear a lot about it in the news as far as kids acting like different animals and things like that. And just to maybe kind of reassure you some, I went, talked to the principals frequently and even talked to someone we get today about this. And so we don't have any, some of the common misconceptions. We don't cater or accommodate any of that. We don't have litter boxes or, you know, you hear these horror stories about, oh, the schools have to do this, or they have to let a student drink out of a saucer of milk or something. And we don't do any of that. And as far as specific incidents, we'll have to kind of research what maybe your granddaughter experienced, but we don't allow students to wear collars, chokers, leashes.
Tails, she said some of them had tails.
We can talk about it some more, but I'm not sure in talking to the principals that there's been any sort of...
She said that her principal is not doing anything. So I told her I was going to come to the board. She's very concerned, especially the biting. And they, and they fight with each other, like two dogs fight or whatever. And she doesn't like it. And I've heard it, I own a beauty shop, so I cut a lot of kids' hair, and I've heard it from the upper grades. Now, haven't heard anything about the younger grade yet, but like in the eighth grade and on up, there it's going on. I'd be shocked that it was going on in our school.
Yeah, well, like I said, I, well, I'm not discounting what you're saying about your granddaughter, but I do disagree on some of it as far as like it's widespread or anything like that. Because I was in cafeterias today. I don't talk to the principals. We're not seeing a lot of that. But your granddaughter's incident in particular, we'll look into for sure. So, but I wanted to reassure you that we don't have any sort of, we've not been under any sort of legal pressure to do anything catering to that, and we won't be catering to that.
Well, that's what I heard. But I just wanted to make sure that y'all were aware that it's still going on. I don't know how many or whatever. I just know what she tells me, because I haven't been there. But this is, like I said, a month or six weeks now, and she said that the principal wasn't doing anything, and the teachers are afraid to do anything or whatever. You know, she's 12, so.
We've got four of the five principals right behind you. Are y'all seeing, we'll just ask right from the horse's mouth, are y'all seeing any sort of growling, biting, dogfight replication in any of the campuses? Are you seeing any of that?
Okay, she's in the sixth grade, so.
I'm the principal at the intermediate school. I mean, I am, yes, Jim.
Are you Mrs. Register?
Yes.
Okay, she mentioned your name.
Yes, but, you know, as far as not, not doing anything, I mean, if anything is, if anything is mentioned like that, then we always address it, you know? I mean, the term furries is not even something that we even allow the kids to talk about.
I know, I mean, it's just ridiculous.
So, and as far as teachers being afraid to do anything, I, I don't believe that that is the case.
Okay.
I have very open and forthcoming sixth-grade teachers especially, and they have no problems telling me their opinions about things. And so, I mean, if there are problems like that, then we, we address them head-on. So, I mean, they're, you know, going down a hallway, you might hear, you might hear different animal sounds, but that doesn't mean that we're taking to the furry level. There, there are different levels of this. I mean, kids are going to be kids, and kids are going to make noises and that kind of thing. It doesn't mean that they're at that level. So, but we do address those things head-on. And no teacher is afraid to say something at all.
I'm just going by what she tells me, and she's pretty smart, so, you know, she, and she's very, very aware of, she sees everything.
And I also have two assistant principals who are also on top of those, those things as well. So, I mean, there are more, there are more adults, and everyone is aware of those situations because we hear about it in the news. So, you know, we don't, we don't want to make the news. We want to maintain our, our school collectiveness. And so, I mean, as a, as a place here that is, you know, pretty much low-key, we try and keep it as low-key as possible in any kind of regard.
But what happens when a kid does do something like that? I mean, does he get kicked out of school or what?
No, if a student were to like bite or scratch someone, we would handle that probably with ISS or something like that. But if they, if that's what you're describing, if that's what happened.
If one student bites another student, I think that's a serious thing. I don't think that's a...
Usually, I don't know that we have any biting in the upper grades. If we had any biting, it would probably typically be maybe the four-year-olds. But for sure, have we had any biting incidents recently?
I mean, recently, uh...
The little bitty ones might be.
Yeah, well, everybody I've talked to that has little kids said they haven't heard of anything going on in the smaller grades, but...
I stood in the high school cafeteria today. I saw no furries.
Well, I don't know about high school. She's in the sixth grade, and I only know what she tells me. So I told her I was going to come and, and address it now if she's concerned.
And I think people get worried because they, like I said, you see the news, and they make it sound like it's everywhere. And your, your poor hapless school district is defenseless to stop it, and they don't have the wherewithal to say no, or they're scared of some lawyer, and that's not the case. Not the case. I'm not pro cat.
Or dog.
Or dog. So we don't condone any of that sort of stuff. But I get, you know, where there's, sometimes there's fear or worry that something like that could happen.
Well, I felt like I had to find out about it anyway. I mean, I only have her word, so, and, you know, she might be a little emotional or something. I don't know what exactly she saw or, you know.
Well, some kid might have growled at her and gotten angry out of, who knows? But we don't have widespread emulating animals. We don't have leashes, we don't have collars, we don't have litter boxes, we don't have any of that. And try as I might to tell that to people, it's almost like it doesn't fit a certain narrative, so they don't want to believe it. Surely, we're covering it up. Surely, it's widespread and rampant in the schools, and it's not. It's not. All right, Laura, thank you. Good topic, interesting. I like to talk about furries.
I don't have a public hearing on the first financial integrity rating system of Texas.
This won't be as exciting. Thank you, Laura. Laura, your jacket, your jacket.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, board. Our school first rating has been released by TEA. This is the 20th rating that has been issued. This is originally started by the legislature. And the purpose is to achieve quality performance in the management of school districts' financial resources. That's the purpose of the school first report. It kind of changes from time to time. Right now, it's got 20 indicators that they score. And they give ratings of superior, above standard, meet standard, and substantial achievement, substandard achievement. Superior is if you get a 90 to 100 points. And each of the indicators are given, most of them are given 10 points. A few of them are given 5 points. And then some of them are just pass fail. Like you got to pass in order to get a, get a rating on your school first. So if you open up your board books, and you'll see there the beginning of the report. It goes down each of the indicators. And then the report's either going to say yes or no for whether it passed that indicator or possibly give you some points. There are two indicators that were not scored technically. And I'm sure that had to do with the COVID pandemic. One of them is indicator number 10, which had to do with the variance in budgeting. They want to make sure that you're going to be budgeting accurately. And of course, with COVID, it was a different world, wasn't it? And so they actually decided, TEA did, not to score this indicator number 10. But they nonetheless gave everybody 10 points. So that was a 10 points that they granted to all districts. And then the other one is indicator number 15, which had to do with the ADA. Of course, you know what COVID has done to our ADA. And that indicator was not scored at all. And so it, it just drops off. So we have all the 20 indicators here for you listed. We have the full description of what that indicator is, and then the results in terms of what the school district got. Overall, the school district scored another 100. And that puts us in the realm of superior achievement. And I have a chart called state statistics compared to prior year. One more, there you go. So this kind of gives you this year, 2021, versus the prior year in 2020. And let's remind you that here in a few minutes that our audit firm will be presenting the financial report for August 31 of 2022. And this school first report is based on the audit from a year ago. So school first is, you know, like a full year behind. So when you see the 21 and 20, those are those two fiscal years. They're older year old. So more, more school districts passed than not. So you see the arrow goes up. 1,011 passed. Eight school districts failed, and they have a total of 1,019 districts. As far as the ratings, we got a superior. And 882 school districts got superior. That was up from the prior year. And then the other two, the Bs and the Cs, the above standard, meet standard, were down, because more of them moved up to the superior. And substandard was also down. Now, if we go to the next page, Dr. Pollard. All right, on this one, what we're doing is we're taking each of the indicators that they've scored. And we're providing you in the gold column, there where it says GIST value, we're giving you the value that was reported on this current first report and comparing it to the prior year's value that was on the previous year's report. So you'll see like on number one, AFR on time. It was due February 27. When did we submit it? The school district submitted it on January 24. The prior year, we submitted on January 20. So we were a few days later than we had been the previous year, so that accounted for the down arrow. But it's still passed, and we still got it in there by the deadline. But like that year, we had, the audit report was not presented to the board until the January board meeting. So now it's next to day and it's great. We're getting them here in December before Christmas break, and we will be able to get this much more on time than we did last year. Then you got things like a clean opinion. Was it a clean opinion from the auditors? Have all of our debt payments been made? Number three, timely payments to all the agencies like TRS and IRS and all the others. Average change in the fund balance passed. Adequate cash on hand, that has a down arrow. So you see that the cash on hand for the fiscal year audit 2021 was 197.7 days. The year before, it was 290. We were spinning down the fund balance on the high school renovation, so that's, that's bringing our, our cash reserves down. You see that that's still substantially over, like the 90 that they require for a score of 10. Good current ratio, that's the difference between current assets and current liabilities. It also went down, but still well within the guidelines for a 10 score. Revenues, expenses, that was up. Adequate variance of budgeted versus actual. This is the one that was not scored. Good long-term debt solvency is down just slightly from the year before, but still well within the range of acceptability. Good debt service ratio, down a little bit. Administration costs are in line. This one they give, we put here that the school districts that are 1,000 to 4,099, because they have a certain table. And then other school districts that are bigger or smaller, they have another set of numbers. So we qualify with this, these numbers. And so basically, you had to be between 11 and a half percent on your administrative cost to 21%. So a 10 was if you had administrative costs under 11 and a half percent. Ours was around nine, 9%. 15% decline in student-staff ratio. That number went down, which is good. And then the last five, one is PMS match. You know, we had to submit the PMS on the, on the fall PMS submission. We have the spring PMS, and we have the summer PMS. And then we'll make sure that what's in the AFR, the audit report, is what was reported in PMS. And so our discrepancy was extremely small. It didn't even register it. And it needed to be below 0.03. Good internal controls. This is reported by the auditor, yes. AFR free of non-compliance, yes. Website financial information, a lot of things that we post to the website that are required postings. And here, we, we got a yes, that we posted all of the required postings. Time of discussion of the property values. This really kind of is not really very useful anymore because of the way that they've changed the calculation of the taxes. But it used to be where they really wanted us to have this discussion, which we, we did at the board workshop, about some time, the delay between the taxes. All right. The report also includes disclosures. So part of the importance of running your finances is, you know, are you transparent to the public? And that's part of the reason for all these financial disclosures and the web postings, is are you being transparent to the public? And so they have required us to put the superintendent's employment contract in this report, which is at the back. They require us to disclose the amount of reimbursements that the superintendent and each board member has received during that fiscal year. Also, if any board members or superintendent has received any compensation for professional services, has received any gifts, or has engaged in any business financial transactions with the school district. So all this is clean. You guys have done a great job on your expense reimbursements for the 2021, and those are all very low, superintendent's as well, considering all the things that he's responsible for. And then at last, you have the current contract. This is not the one that was in effect back in '21. This is the one that's actually in effect right now for public disclosure. So that's the school first report. It's a great report. You guys are used to that every year. A lot of school districts get good reports. So everybody's doing a great job. This starts with the board, and, you know, I guess how ethical you guys are and what, what kind of a direction that you're giving the superintendent and his subordinates to do everything according to the law and to make sure that everybody's working hard in the right direction and meeting all the requirements of the state. There are a lot, there are a lot of requirements, believe me. And they're getting more and more complex all the time. So it's not only the board, the superintendent, but it's the principals. It's their staffs on the different campuses, because we work with them. on the different campuses, because we work with them. All of them are involved in the financial part of the school district, athletics, all the departments are, and so we thank them. Of course, we have a great staff here at the admin office that work hard year-round to, to earn these kinds of scores. And this being a public hearing, I'm going to open this up for any public comments or questions that anybody might have that's in the audience.
We want to thank Daryl and his staff, and he's been shorthanded with Emily having her baby, she's been out, so they've all had to kind of double up and do extra work. So even more so than in usual years, this Daryl and his staff have really worked hard to get all this done. And, you know, we kind of take it for granted that, oh, we got another 100, great, but that, not all districts do that, so Daryl, we really appreciate him up there.
Thank you. You're welcome, you're welcome. A pleasure. So there's nothing for you all to approve, this is just a public hearing that we present. But you're welcome to ask questions.
Man, the contract on there?
The contract.
Did you say Bear's contract? It's from this year and not the?
Yes, the current contract that's in effect right now when we're presenting the report.
That's what's, that's what's?
That's what they're required to do.
Okay.
So next year, we'll have his new contract. Those are usually done in February, like?
January.
January, February?
Yeah.
So good question, though. You would think it probably ought to do with the 2021, you know? Give up the current one. Any other questions?
Good job.
No?
Thanks, Daryl.
Thank you.
Y'all ready to go to the next agenda item?
Sure.
Review and approve 2021 audit report.
All right, so with us tonight is the managing partner for Lot Vernon out of Temple, and they've been doing our audit for a number of years. And the team that's primarily worked on our audit is Philip Robino and Leona McCusky.
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 All right. And they come and do their audit here, but a lot of the audits now are done remotely, just like a lot of work is done nowadays in business remotely. And so they came and, you know, spent some time here, and the rest of their audit time was done remotely from their office. And then there's a lot of back and forth emails, whatnot answering questions, providing documentation, and whatnot. Dane, we're happy to have you here tonight to present our 2022 audit report.
Superintendent Pollard, members of the board, you have a copy of 2022 annual financial report in front of you. It is hot off the press, we finished it this morning, so, but hey, we get, we get to present in December, so that's, that's all good. As it relates to this report, we finished the audit on it, so we have three opinion letters attached to this report. The first opinion relates to this 100-plus-page document as, as it relates to whether it's in compliance with general accepted accounting principles. That is an unmodified or clean opinion, meaning when you look at it, all the disclosures are there, and all the financial statements have, have been checked. Before I dive into the other two opinion letters, let's look at the core financials real quick, starting on page 19. This is Gatesville School District's balance sheet for fiscal year in 8/31/22. Same type of presentation, similar presentation as prior years, general fund, special revenue funds in the total. Primarily looking at the total column on the far right. Total assets, your first subtotal, 17.6 million. That's down 2.3 million from last year. The biggest decrease is the fifth item in that subset you're due from other governments at 1.8 million. It's down over $2 million due to you having a, a COVID receivable in the previous year of 1.8, you know, didn't have that for this fiscal year. Total liabilities, your next subtotal, 3.2 million, down slightly, about 870,000 over last year. Majority of that is timing issues with your due-to, due-froms and due from other governments. The total fund balance, the second subtotal from the bottom, 13.9 million, is down 1.5 million or 9% from last year. We'll look at that decrease with revenues and expenses. Before I move on to that, if you look over on the general fund column, third number from the bottom is your unrestricted or unassigned fund balance, commonly referred to as your reserve. It represents at 9.7 million, it's 69% of your total fund balance. And by my calculations, it's four and a half months' worth of operating expenditures. I think by your board policy, it's 4.2, so it's, it's more than optimal. TEA's optimal is two, two months, and your board policy is not less than three, so it is in compliance with both. Any questions on the balance sheet? Revenues and expenses is on page 23. Total revenues for the district, your first subtotal there, 34.5 million, up 0.9%, or 300,000 over last year. The only significant increase was federal programs, the number right above that, at 6.5. It's up around 600,000 over last year, and 450,000 of that is child nutrition, child nutrition was up this fiscal year, as a lot of districts were. Total expenditures, your next subtotal, about middle of the page, 35.7 million. That is down 7.5 million or 17%. Your biggest decrease was two items above that, your capital outlay, a little over 2 million, it's down 10.3 million over last year. Again, you're coming out of that capital project phase, so you have many more capital projects in the previous fiscal year. And then overall, from all departments, usually take a look at salary and wages, salary and wages are actually up 2.8 million to, to compensate for that decrease, to come to that 7.5 decrease in expenditures. The next section there, your other financing sources and uses totals to a negative 400,000, that's, that's basically just your refunding, y'all had a bond refunded this year to decrease your payments in future periods. Then your other financing sources, the next subsection down, you see a 1.8 in and a 1.8 out, that is where you're moving money from general fund to capital projects fund, and all of that money was spent this year. And then the third number from the bottom, that negative 1.5, that is our 9% decrease in fund balance. So overall, it's a, it's a balanced budget, and then you had some capital projects still to make it negative. Any questions? The compliance side of the audit, the other two opinion letters are at the back, there's a nice summary of it on page 97. This is commonly referred to as the federal single audit. The first opinion relates to the internal controls of the financial statements, it is unmodified or clean with no findings. Then item B, the internal control as it relates to the federal programs themselves, also unmodified or clean opinion with no findings. And a little past halfway down the page, you will see the major programs required to be tested this year. So this year, we had to test child nutrition, and then of course, the ESAR or COVID, COVID funds. Looking ahead to next year, Title I will be in normal rotation for next year as a major program. And then if you receive additional ESAR funds, the feds have labeled those as high risk, so we're required to put them. As many years as we're going to have ESAR funds, we're going to have to audit as a major program. But Title I will be on the table for next year. And then second from the bottom there, do you qualify as a low-risk auditee, and that answer is yes, and that is important for future grants. Any questions on compliance? You also have a staple report, so reports of the board trustee. It is required by me as an auditor to the board. There are several question and answers in there. It gives us liberty to tell you whether we had to get attorneys and things of that nature, whether we had difficulties. All of these are a big positive answer. On page four, through about 20, you'll see some adjusting journal entries, I have, I have to disclose that to you. However, I will tell you that none of these affected the fund financials, these are just for the full girl. So these are established in GASB 34 and GASB 68 for pensions and GASB 75 for the, for the OPEP side. That's all of what those entries are for, but I do have to disclose that to you. And then of course, the client rep letter is, is the rest of the report. The only thing I will verbally note to you is that, you know, hurdles going forward to next year. Obviously, numero uno is if Mr. Fisher is going to be here or not. He's been, he's been great as a CFO, makes our job a lot easier, and actually makes me feel a lot better when I send my staff out there that they're getting everything they need. So if you have to replace him, that's going to be a pretty big hurdle. I'll couple that with a pronouncement change. So in this fiscal year, we had leases changed. Now, you skated by that because y'all didn't have enough material leases to change your financials. So in 2023, they have the software-for-service side of that. Nobody will skate past that one. So there will be additional disclosures related to software for services. Basically, we have to create an asset and a liability for those services based on the payments, present value of the future payments of those leases, and all districts will be involved with that because you've got tons of software. You don't purchase software anymore, you, you pay a service for it. So, and that pronouncement goes into effect next year. So couple that with possibility of replacing the CFO, it's going to be a significant hurdle, so I wanted to mention that.
Thanks for mentioning that.
It's definitely, it's definitely going to be a hurdle, so.
Mr. Fraser just can't go.
That would be a good, that would be a good scenario. But no, he's been great, all the years we've done this audit, it's been one of the, you know, the better audits we have because of him. Any questions on compliance or the board report? Well, that concludes my report.
Dane, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be careful driving back.
Do I hear a motion to?
Mr. Fraser needs to make the recommendation.
Oh. They're actually approving the audit.
You need to make the recommendation first, Mr. Fraser, for the approval.
Okay, we're recommending, the management recommends that the board approves the audit for the 22 fiscal year. Do I hear a motion? Jimmy, second? Okay, and anybody have any more comments or questions? All in favor? Anyone opposed, and it passes. The next portion of our meeting is a consent agenda. These are things that are normally part of the routine operation in school districts that we pass up on in terms of having a long discussion and just approve it as a bolt. The minutes of November 14th, regular meeting, minutes of November 17th, special meeting in the campus of the election, financial statements as of November 30th, bills and payrolls for November, budget amendments, year-to-date budget amendments, quarterly investment report, vital signs report, food service report. All of those things are in that. Does anybody make a motion that we accept them as stated? Hey, Charles? Second? Linda? Anyone, anyone more discussion about these items? All in favor of accepting the consent agenda items? And that's 100%. Public policy update, DEC local.
This is just a minor update. It's basically Scott wanted me to present, it's on discretionary leave for years, it's been our practice, and it still is, that you can't use more than five personal days in a semester. So obviously, you use more for sickness, illness, but not just for whatever your discretion, five per semester. And so we just want to make sure that that's articulated still in policy, so we've got the wording there. The discretionary use of state personal leave shall not exceed five workdays a semester, ten days in school year, and again, that's what we've been doing, we've done it for years like that. We just want to make sure that DEC local still had that in there. And so that was the only portion of that we wanted to update. So our recommendation is to update policy DEC local as presented with that wording.
Are there any restrictions to that? Do they, like, do they have to apply to the principal permission to go somewhere?
Right, yeah, like a discretionary, so, yeah, anything that's probably more fun in nature as opposed to I'm deathly ill, those don't count towards this five, so.
And do we still allow teachers, do we not allow teachers to extend holidays?
Right, right. So any additional days granted shall be dogged from the employee's pay at the daily rate, beginning with the sixth absence, sixth day of absence, the days thereafter, even if leave is available. Discretionary use of leave shall not be allowed on the day scheduled for end of semester or end of year's exams, days scheduled for state mandated assessments, the last day of school, or any professional or staff woman days, except with special approval for extenuating circumstances for, from an employee's immediate supervisor or designated.
So it can happen with permission from the?
If there was some extenuating.
Extenuating, yeah.
Any other questions? You want a motion?
So my recommendation is to update policy DEC local as presented.
Do I hear a motion? Linda? Second? Jimmy? Any more discussion? All in favor?
So wait, who? Who are you in?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We'll now go into executive session.
We have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. It'll be quick, though.
Police Department.
Yes, so we went, we're ironing out the last few details in the split from the Gatesville Police Department, city of Gatesville, and so we wanted to iron out jurisdiction, and so Chief Golkey and Chief Stiles have been working together on a MOU that basically outlines which entity is in charge in different scenarios. And so basically, in a nutshell, anything occurring on our premises, we, our GIST Police Department, would have primary jurisdiction, and GPD would act as more of a secondary backup, we're here to help you type situation. The MOU's been blessed by our lawyer, he read through it and said it was well done. One thing after Uvalde that we articulated in the agreement is whether it was a GIST or GPD or Sheriff DPS for that matter, if you have, to have a school shooting, whoever's first on the scene, go forth and take care of it, don't wait, don't ask for permission, just go. And so we articulated that in there as well. Then we kind of got into the weeds on some things like, say for instance, a car passes a bus with its lights flashing and the stop signs out, well, which police department takes care of that? And so we wanted to say that if it's within the city, GPD is more than welcome to, they don't have to call us for us to go take care of it, they could take care of it on the scene if they're there. So a lot of little things like that, basically hatching out. And most of the time, it's very much a joint effort, but we did clear up some things just in case there was ever a question. So again, the primary jurisdiction would be GIST for things happening here.
Who, say we call 911, who responds, sheriff or city?
The sheriff's dispatching would, it depends on what's going on. So like if it's something happening up at the schools, we, Chief Stiles should get it. And so after hours, we have different police officers on duty, on call. So one week, it'll be one officer, the next week, it'll be the other, and so Chief Stiles would didn't lay it to, say it's Damian White, all right, Damian, we've got a prowler around the high school, we need you to go respond to it.
Any other questions about that?
So I, I feel like that it's possible if there's any more changes, like Nathan and Gary are, this was the, I felt like, I thought it was going to be the final document, but Nathan may still want to do something. If he tweets any more of it, I'll bring it back to you again. That way that you get the final say. But for right now, it's my recommendation that the board approve the MOU with the city of Gatesville regarding police jurisdiction as presented, with the possibility that we may come back in January if they tweet something, but they have it in hand or looking at it.
What if we sent a police officer to a home of student attendance to get a student? And then you encounter something at their residence?
If it's in the heat of the moment, they can respond right there. Just like, for instance, if a... Just like, for instance, if a, if a, they've pulled over somebody in the parking lot and they're dealing with something, and that car takes off running from them, they can pursue, nothing stops them from pursuing them. So I had my recommendation, she'll have?
Hear a motion?
How many motion?
Okay, Sean makes a motion, second, Charlie, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right. We're going to executive session at six twenty.